Flag salute. And then Blossom is going to read our new land acknowledgement for us.
Thank you, Amy. The Sitka School Board acknowledges that our schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the Klinkit people who have lived in Sitka since time immemorial. We express our deepest respect and gratitude for our indigenous neighbors, the Klinkit, for their enduring care and protection of Klinkit Ani.
And do a roll call. Austin Teal Olsen.
Present.
Eric Van Syes.
Here.
Paul Ryu.
Here.
Andrew Haines.
Here.
Amy Morrison.
Here.
Right, um, and if we can get a motion to approve the proposed agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any public comment to the motion? Wanna give a little insight onto, no? Oh, okay, all right, any board comment on the motion? And we need to do a roll call vote on this one since it does have, um, financial. Austin Teal Olsen.
Yes.
Eric Van Syes.
Yes.
Paul Ryu.
Yes.
Andrew Haines.
Yes.
Amy Morrison.
Yes.
Um, moving on to item six, special reports, government to government. Do we have anyone tonight to report under this?
Hi, Rebecca Hinshite with Sitka Assembly. Grateful as always to be in the room with you and, um, I remember a commitment from both sides previously to spend more time before the budget season talking about where we're headed, so I hope that's something that people are thinking about. Thanks.
Moving on to item seven, recognitions, and Paul has our first one for us.
Stacy, would you come up here, please? Hi, Stacy. So I'm sure that everyone knows, but, um, Stacy was the runner-up of the, how do I say it? The secondary science finalist for, um, the Presidential Award for Mathematics and Science. Of course, Stacy's discipline is science, and that's, uh, an award that's put together for the National Science Foundation and, um, very prestigious award, and, uh, we're very lucky to have all of your commitment. You know, I was trying to figure out what to say, and, uh, I was Googling Stacy earlier. Stacy and I have known each other for a long time, but, you know, you throw in Stacy's name and you get to see a lot of cool articles. Like, you do it with a lot of the teachers in this district, but Stacy's commitment to her students, um, I've got to see them go through at the middle school and now again to the high school, so it's been pretty fantastic. Congratulations, Stacy, we're all so proud of you. Thanks for all your hard work.
So Stacy says she doesn't want to say a couple of words. I'm gonna kinda, um, maybe have a couple of prompts. So Stacy, have you, when do we hear the final word from the President if you're going to be, uh, selected? So when, do we know when that's gonna be coming out? I know it's kind of any time in the fall, right, but we haven't heard any news, so. This is, uh, the most prestigious award as a science and math teacher you've received, so we're really excited to have you here and be part of that, and congratulations again. You sure you don't want to say anything to your students, to anyone else, to recognize all the hard work? Science is important.
Um, no, I'm good. Um, so I guess I would just have to say thank you to my colleagues and my students because, um, I don't know that I could ever teach anywhere besides Sitka. We have the most amazing students. Um, I love my job, I love going to work every day, um, I love learning new things with my kids, um, and I can only do that because I have amazing colleagues who help me every step of the way, um, from when I very first started as a tutor at the high school, um, and working for Sitka Native Ed programs to...
We don't wanna break that.
To, um, where I am today. And I've gotten lucky enough to work in a lot of the schools in the district, and, um, so I just truly enjoyed it, and, uh, luckily I have Gorilla Glue, so we'll fix that and we'll be all set.
Congratulations, again. How about another round of applause for Stacy going? Thank you, Mr. Haines.
Thanks, you guys. My daughter Chloe came home today at lunch because she forgot her boots for Ms. Golden's class, and she was talking about it, and she's like, "She's so smart, she knows so much stuff." That's coming from a student. Um, all right, Andrew has our next, um, presentation to give.
Good evening. I'd like to, uh, recognize the 2021 Sitka High School Girls Track and Field Team and their Division II state title. If, uh, Coaches Jeremy Strong, Shasta Smith, and Diane Chong and any students from the team would like to join me up front, please. We wanna congratulate you on this, uh, tremendous accomplishment, and I know nobody likes being put on the spot, but, um, if a coach or a student would like to share a highlight from the season or anything from the, from the event itself, we would love to hear from you.
You're really wishing you weren't standing next to me, no, right? You can pass, you can pass, but really, we're all very proud of you, and this event took place in the summer, yes? Yeah, so can you tell us just a recap or anything about that?
Sure, yeah, it was technically the summer, but the weather at the meet was actually terrible, more like weather we've been having recently. It was raining the entire time, um, and we had a little tent that everybody was hiding under, but it ended up being really fun, reran anyways, and everyone did really good, so, yeah. And my name is Addie Poulson, and I'm a senior.
Um, I'm Anna Prushin, I'm a junior, and my probably favorite part of the meet was, uh, the four-by-eight team, uh, 'cause all the girls were just really, like, supportive and everything.
All right, I'm Toni Smith, I'm a senior, and my favorite was probably the four-by-eight as well. We went into the tournament, like, or, I guess, meet seeded like seventh, and then we won, so that was pretty exciting.
My name is Maitlin Young, I'm a sophomore, and my favorite event was probably the four-by-four. It was at the end of the meet, and everyone was cheering, and it was pretty exciting.
My name is Lindsay Bartolaba, and I just graduated, and I'm gonna pass.
I'm Canaan Ali Hard King, and I'm a junior. Um, I think it was just a lot of fun to be there. I only went for a relay, which I was not expecting at all at the beginning of the season, so it was fun to just be a part of that.
I'm Desiree Chong, and my favorite part was the four-by-one relay, and it was my first year in track, and winning was really cool.
Uh, I'm Jeremy Strong, uh, the head coach, and there were so many highlights that I could probably sit up here and bore you all with for fifteen, thirty minutes. Some of the things that I really enjoyed was just the versatility of the girls and how flexible they were in dealing with the weather and travel, and just the year in general was such a difficult year for everybody, and they really rose up and, and just adapted to every situation, and, uh, you know, from the girls winning the four-by-100 meter relay, uh, and the four-by-800 meter relay, and for the first time since I've coached, I had a girl run in both of those, on both of those teams, and it was Addie Poulson ran in the four-by-one and the four-by, those are vastly different races. Um, and then having, you know, student athletes like Canaan step in who just had no clue what they're capable of, and, and, you know, they didn't say it, but the four-by-four took second, and the four-by-200 meter relay also took second, and just the, the go-get-'em attitude that the girls had, and when we won the, um, state championship, I knew that happened, but to my surprise, not surprised, but surprised to get the award, they gave us the sportsmanship award as well, and when the, the, uh, person handed me the award, they said, "Your girls are just so happy all the time, they're so smiley," and it just made us all really pleased to give them this award, so that was a big highlight for me.
Well, I don't have much to say after that. I do wanna go back to the four-by-eight again, though, because that was the first event of the whole meet, and so, so exciting, but you guys won by twelve seconds? A bit, a fair amount, and it was super, super exciting, and of course, the rain was falling, and it was dramatic, and they ran with the flag, and it was good times, good times. Um, so, yeah, I'm Shasta Smith, and I coach the distance primarily.
Well, we're gonna get a quick picture, so if you guys will kinda get ready, if we can get somebody, maybe Chris, would you mind getting a picture? I'm gonna give this back to Andrew so I can hand out your certificate. Right, everyone, big shout-out to you, Mrs. Ron Earlyfond. And now, we have twelve, we'll kinda mention later, but twelve runners going to state this weekend, too. Twelve runners this weekend going to state in Anchorage. Uh, which one of you are gonna be, raise your hand if you're heading to Anchorage this weekend. Very nice. Well, we know you guys are gonna represent us proudly, and we're excited, and you're gonna be, uh, having plenty of people here cheering you on, uh, in Anchorage on the Bartlett Trail, so, thank you. How about another round of applause for Division II champions? Nice job, everyone.
Jeremy, don't sit down quite yet. Jeremy, Mr. Strong, you can come right on back up, and we have one more recognition for you. Blossom's got that one.
It is my pleasure to present, Jeremy, this award of recognition, um, for being the 2021 Alaska Girls Track and Field Coach of the Year, um, sponsored by the United States Marine Corps. Thank you for your dedication and all that you do with our young students and, um, you know, all of your hard work shows, so thank you very much.
Do you have anything to say? How long have you coached?
I've been coaching at, uh, track for ten years, would be eleven, but COVID, and I've been Shasta's assistant for cross-country for ten years as well. But this award, uh, has my name on it, but really, it goes to the, the kids who, uh, listen and, and give it their best, and the assistant coaches that, that helped make the program run strong, so, thank you.
Well, thank you, Jeremy, congratulations again. Thank you, Ken, congratulations. How about another round of applause for all of our recipients?
Right, thanks, everybody. Let's see, moving on to item eight on the agenda, persons to be heard. Persons to be, excuse me, persons to be heard is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board about a topic that is not on the agenda. As these are not agenda items, no board deliberation or action will occur in response. Questions for clarification may be posted by board members. The board may choose to refer items to the superintendent or designate for further action. The standard time limit for comments will be three minutes unless otherwise stated by the board president with consent of the board. A sound will indicate when time expires. All comments must be respectful, and charges or complaints against specific employees are not permitted per Alaska State statutes. Members of the public are referred to Board Policy thirteen-twelve, thirteen-twelve-point-one, thirteen-twelve-point-two, thirteen-twelve-point-three, and associated administrative regulations, as well as the Board Bylaw nine-three-two-three for information on how to lodge complaints. Speakers are also asked to please state their full name for the record prior to speaking. Are there any persons to be heard tonight? Looks like we have it, yes, go ahead.
Um, good evening, my name is Annette Becker. Thank you for your time. I'm the Program Manager at Search Ravensway Program. Ravensway is a residential adolescent substance abuse treatment program, providing services to at-risk youth here in Sitka for the last thirty-two years. I wanted to raise awareness and share my concerns with you about the City Assembly voting in favor of moving the seaplane base to the north end of Joponski Island. The proposed location is directly next to one of the Sitka School District classrooms that provide academic instruction to approximately forty to fifty-five at-risk youth each year. Search and the Sitka School District have a longstanding MOU. Ravensway has a school, a full-time teacher, and all of the students that are enrolled in the, all the students that are enrolled are enrolled in the Sitka School District and earn school credit while receiving substance abuse treatment. This program provides a safe environment where youth have the opportunity to practice and integrate healthy life skills in a supportive setting. Ravensway is a healing place for youth who are unable to control their use of illegal drugs. Many youth who are enrolled in the Ravensway Program are experiencing trauma, have difficulty managing strong emotions, are failing in school, and have gotten into trouble with the law. As you'll see here in the handout that I'll provide to you, um, that the proposed seaplane base is adjacent to the Ravensway Program, and the last building on Seward Avenue is the school, um, and the therapy office. This will have a significant negative impact on our ability to provide necessary, effective, and beneficial academic instruction and treatment services to youth and their families. The seaplane base operation is estimated to rate of twenty-one one-way flights with up to a hundred and thirty-six one-way flights during the peak season per day. This will have a significant increase in not only the seaplane noise, but also foot and vehicle traffic related to the seaplane base operation, as expected. The current land, um, the piece of land that is currently owned by the, um, Alaska Department of Education and Early Development. We are encouraging you to email or call Heidi Tishner, the School Finance Manager, the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development, who is working on the land sale. The Alaska Department of Education and Early Development is not aware that there is a school district school and substance abuse treatment located directly next to the site. Communicate the concerns about the negative impact the Sitka School Base will have on the essential academic instruction and substance abuse treatment services provided by Ravensway to Heidi Tishner and the City Assembly members. My goal is to raise awareness. I will be following up with an email, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions or provide a tour to any of you guys that would, would like more information. Thank you for your time, support, and I look forward to ongoing communication.
And then, there's just a handout on this, so... Thank you. Are there any other persons to be heard tonight? Thanks, Annette. All right, moving on to school highlights, and let's start with, how about Jill? Do you wanna start tonight?
Hey there. Jill LaCron, Principal, Bear Notch, good to see everyone. So, um, here's a picture of our kids in library, where it may not seem so exciting to you guys. Our library has not, um, had a certified teacher in that position for over a decade, maybe longer, we're not really sure, but with some real creative, um, work with our staff and just, you know, problem-solving, our kids, um, for the first time, you know, in over a decade, are actually having library, um, and it's really exciting to see that kids are in there with books in their hands and some care is being given to the library, you know? I wanna thank Jeff Hole and Carrie Sagel and the AmeriCorps and everybody who has pitched in to help clean it up and clean it out. There's books that were, um, in there that were written, well, way before I was born, which is a long time ago, and haven't been checked out since the seventies, so it's really nice to see that it's actually, you know, being used now, so that's really an exciting picture. So, some exciting things at Bear Notch, besides that, which is just outstanding. Interventions have started at, in our building, which is really nice, um, to see our kids getting extra support in reading and possibly math if they need it. I know I had talked about having, um, um, Ed Littlefield here earlier, remember I talked about him? Well, we had, um, a school-wide concert, um, when he finished up his program, and in the past, we would have him in the gym, but because that's just not feasible, we did it, um, via Teams in all of our classrooms, and it was really amazing, um, to see what we could do, and so using that same platform, we're gonna go back and start doing our monthly assemblies with our students, and I think it'll be great. I just, again, wanna say how exciting it is to work with such a creative group of teachers and staff that brainstorm problems, you know, we figure out how to solve these problems. We had our first parent meeting la, uh, this week, and, um, we did a hybrid model. We were able to have so many people in the building, so I had parents sign up for, you know, I had twenty slots available, and they signed up and passed that, they had to come on teams, and it was definitely a learning experience, because a hybrid model is a lot, what you guys know, a lot harder than you think, and, um, we had a great turnout in-person and online, although at one point, somebody closed the laptop. Right, uh, we opened it back up, but it was, you know, that learning experience, um, but it was exciting to, um, be able to, to connect with our parents again and our families, because they've, we've lost that connection in a lot of ways. So, um, you know, even though this year has been a different year because of COVID, it's exciting to see that we are figuring out ways to, um, go back to some of the things we've done in the past, having our monthly assemblies and our family meetings and things like that. So it's been pretty, I mean, a very busy month so far. Any questions? No questions? All right, all right.
No, thank you so much.
Uh-huh.
If you guys don't mind, can I go back to the persons to be heard really quick? Because I know Elias just came in and he wanted to, still want to say something? Yeah, go ahead and come on up. He wanted to just say something really quick in that section, so.
I'm just gonna finish up with work in time. I'm Elias Erickson, uh, for the record. Often like Eric, uh, does, finishing up work before he rushes to meetings, time and time again. In fact, I even had a shirt I was planning on ironing, which was the first time I was gonna iron a shirt since Christmas for you, um, but I'm here for you, Eric, 'cause I just really felt like it was important to me to honor you and all the work that you've done. When I think about your time on the board, um, and just characteristics of who you are, I just think, uh, integrity is, is a huge one, and I, I think you are, uh, someone who is willing to make sacrifices, um, and not ever expect anything in return. And I would say when it comes to a publicly-elected official, those are two qualities that are highly desirable and very, um, uh, they're, they're rare. They're rare in people, and it's just, uh, I think that my time that I shared with you, um, all those hours of conversations, not a minute of it was wasted, and, uh, that's something that I just really, uh, look back on, uh, fondly, and I just really wanted to, uh, recognize you and, and just honor you and, and give credit where credit is due, because I think that you've done a lot of really good work, and even when we were in intense disagreement, um, there was just a, a sense of respect, um, between us, and, and, uh, and you, you always knew what was important and what to, you know, keep, um, in, in the main focus. You raised great kids, who I grew up with, I played percussion with Lath, obviously, growing up, and Nerf guns when we were little, um, and I'm looking forward to seeing what they do in the future, too, but Eric, you've, you've done a great job on the board, you've got a great family, and I'm really, uh, thankful for the time that I got to serve with you.
Yeah, thank you, Elias, and back at you, too. It was good, very good work, and we covered a lot of territory.
Right, thanks. Sorry, guys, just wanted to give him the opportunity to speak. Um, it's Elias. Um, let's see, we are on to Casey.
Good evening. I think the theme that I wanted to bring tonight was, uh, activities, uh, in this past month. We've had, uh, some of our normal activities start up, uh, at Keet Gushahine. Uh, we don't have a, a ton of things at the elementary level, but it's really nice to, um, be able to offer some of those things, uh, to our students again. Band is in full swing, uh, for fifth graders. Girls on the Run started today. Uh, we, we swap seasons, I believe they're rewriting, uh, some of the boys' curriculum, and so Girls on the Run is going this fall, and, uh, Boys on the Run will begin in, in February. Uh, fourth grade choir started yesterday, I believe, and, uh, we had about twenty-five students, uh, turn out initially for that, and, uh, as Jill mentioned, too, we got started with our, uh, interventions, um, and so interventions for all four grade levels have, have started up, uh, with fifth grade beginning this week and, and the other grades, uh, previously, and so we're getting into the, uh, the swing there, helping kids with reading, um, that need that extra help, and, uh, we have, I just wanted to mention, too, our weekly, uh, testing program. I think we have close to seventy, uh, students signed up with the weekly testing at Keet, and that's been, you know, a positive thing for us as, as well. And then the last thing I wanna mention is just, uh, I wanna recognize the staff, all the way from our custodial crew, uh, to, through our teachers and paras, everybody, uh, and just all the effort that they're putting in with the kids each and every day, and it's, uh, really neat to see the relationships and, and that they have going with the students, and, and just meeting them where they're at and, and bringing them along, um, academically and with all the social-emotional stuff.
Thank you. Um, and Ben is not here tonight, Laura, or you? Wanna give a report, since Ben's not here?
Um, so we've had a really great September at Blatchley. Um, cross-country wa, had a full season. Today was the last day of our season. We had a great fun run on the course at Totum after the high school race, and Coach Prushin and Coach Partially were proud of the thirty-three kids who participated throughout the whole season. They had pizza and Gatorade today, so I got dinner before this meeting. It was awesome. Um, chess club is going strong, and meetings are large enough that we're gonna move them from Mr. Allison's classroom up to the commons to allow for more distancing and space. Ben is not here tonight because he's with a theme class, they're pulling a skate. They made traditional halibut hooks, and they're using modern hooks that they put out on a skate. Ben had to use his boat to pull the skate, because the kids are on an Allen Marine boat, but a commercial boat can't pull a subsistence skate, so he's pulling the skate, and the kids are watching to see, and he already took it down, and they ma, they made it together as far as attaching the hooks, so he, um, I'm curious to see what they got. He has not texted me to tell me how much fish they got, because then he knows I would be asking for some. Um, they also did three-D printed designs of their own hooks, the kids designed their own hooks. Basketball begins next Monday, and that is something that's pretty exciting for our kids, and Mr. Larson has jazz band going again three mornings a week. We have a newspaper class this year, and Mr. Vowell, one of our new ELA teachers, is, um, teaching that, and the newspaper should be in print by Monday. Um, the first, we're just gonna use a pretty simple format where we're doing just double-sided two pages, but we're excited to potentially go online or look at a newsprint kind of version. And they've accomplished a lot in a short period of time. Student council elections are over, and the kids are currently working on revising the dress code, creating formal bylaws, um, jamboree activities, and JL McCarty and I are kind of doing the advising on that. And we've opened a tutoring center in the library with our two AmeriCorps folks, um, as well as Diana Fulton Twaddle, and we have National Honor Society kids coming down from Sitka High School. And we have National Honor Society kids coming down from Sitka High School. So that's been really successful. We've had eight to ten kids every afternoon since we opened it last week, so we're really excited about that. And there's a conversation that Diana has going with some Coast Guard volunteers, so we're hoping to really make this a kind of community place where folks who are interested in working with kids can come and help them academically.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Not even wearing one of these.
They're hot. But I did share masks with you guys tonight, so those are our school masks for this year and they do say the Halat scene. And so I just wanted to share that so that you had that. Um, the students really liked them and so seeing those all over the school is, is really nice. I kinda feel like we hogged the meeting up front, so not gonna hog this time. Um, the recognitions are fantastic. We just have a lot of great staff and, and students that are doing great things. So thank you for the recognitions earlier, um, that's really nice. And the cross-country team, you know, got weathered out this weekend, never made it to Catch Can. We ended up running on a beautiful Monday afternoon here this week. And it was absolutely incredible because the girls and boys ran together and the top nine finishers were Sitka. All seven boys and then two girls. And it was amazing. Really hardworking, great group of kids. I just wish them the best of luck this weekend when they go to compete. Um, I wanted to thank you all because our furniture came in. And a huge shout out to Mike Baralaba and our maintenance group. They got it all together and it's already in our classrooms. So, um, very much needed and the building looks a lot better. And we have the spacing, thank you very much, um, for that. And then we have a huge date tomorrow. We're having our College and Career Fair. We are having it in person and we have forty different institutions that will be present. We have a lot of mitigations in place. We have everything covered. But, uh, it's gonna be nice to have that event in person and allow not only Sitka High kids to be there in the morning, but Pacific High's gonna come through and Mount Edum is also gonna come through the fair. So it's really a good community event and gives the, the students the opportunity to see the variety of things that they have.
Any questions? What's it tomorrow?
So the fair is gonna be all day and so our students will go from when classes start at eight forty-five until lunch. And then there's a lunch break and then the other schools will come in the afternoon completely separate. It's not open to the public this year. Um, that's one of our biggest mitigations and we are COVID testing all of the vendors, so.
Invite the media by chance?
Pardon me?
Did you invite the media? Did you let them in by chance?
Invite the media?
Yeah.
Who?
Sure.
We'd, we'd like to.
No, I was wondering if you invited like Radio or the Sentinel or anything, if they're, if they have a chance to come in, if it's closed.
No, but I'm gonna take lots of pictures.
Thank you very much. And Mandy's not here tonight? So before you guys all scatter, um, October is National Principals Month, so we wanted to just recognize our principals and our assistant principals in our school district because you guys are the leaders of our buildings and you guys do a fantastic job and always go above and beyond. It's, I mean, it's just amazing what you guys do. And I appreciate the fact that you guys just come to all of our school board meetings and give us reports. Um, I think it was Elias that originally came up with that idea, if I'm not mistaken.
Actually, uh, Laura.
Oh, Laura, oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Laura came up with that idea, but it's fantastic and it's been, it's always the highlight, I know for me, of our meetings. Um, so thank you for everything you guys do. Thank you for making this, um, a commitment to being here and giving us your, your updates. Um, and we have something for each of you, so if you all can come up and we'll get a group picture too, so.
Amy, would you mind if I just said a couple things? I just wanna take a, I just wanna take a brief moment and just, um, give a shout out to all of the administrators, principals. Uh, they really have done an amazing job. Um, coming in as superintendent, it has been fantastic working with them. Um, we've been able to have some great conversations, the dedication, commitment, uh, for some of our COVID mitigations, making sure that we have all the pieces in place, phone calls home when we've had situations come up with COVID or contacting parents or just everything. I just have, I really appreciated the work, uh, and the collaborative, uh, approach that we've, uh, as administrative team developed over the last couple of months since, uh, I've been here. And I just wanna take that moment to thank them for everything. So, uh, you guys are an amazing team. I'm really enjoying working with you and, uh, happy National Principals Month.
Right, thank you. Moving on to our reports and presentations. And Carrie, I think you have. Is correct? Thanks, you guys.
Hi, um, my name is Carrie Segal. I'm here representing, uh, the Pathways Coalition, uh, which I take part in as part of my STEPS work. The Pathway Coalition is a group of like-minded, uh, organizations in town that have similar missions and similar clientele. You'll recognize them, the tribe. The school district save youth advocates. Um, we have work groups. One of the work groups is the Family Engagement Work Group, which I co-chair with Lisa Hodges. Um, we saw that the city of Sitka identified three priorities for early childhood under a STEPS process. And one of those was increasing, uh, free and fun family activities, which we agreed to take on as, uh, a goal and take it away from their early childhood coalition. And then COVID hit and, um, activities stopped. Um, so a year went by, there weren't a lot of activities. And we decided, using a collective impact approach, that our work groups would design an outdoor family challenge in the spring. Um, we would encourage agencies and organizations to provide free and fun family activities. We'd run it April through June. Um, we would use the Sitkakids.com website and the Sitkakids Facebook page to publicize and track events. We'd post an events calendar, um, and prize registration on Sitkakids. We would host flyer posting, um, publicity and picture posting on the Sitkakids Facebook page and provide gift cards for random drawings. We had several organizations that provided those gift cards, youth advocates, Sit Kids Against Family Violence, Sitka School District and Search. Other participants included Sitka Public Library, 4H, Salty Spoke, Herring Protectors, Sitka Science Center, Sitka Tribal Alaska, and I'm probably forgetting a few. We hosted twenty-four events, um, during the course of the spring. And, um, not all of those events can we like take credit for, um, but this is the impact that we feel like we had. We encouraged organizations to return to providing activities. Um, we provided new activities like the Ten Tree Challenge. We boosted numbers of participants for some of those groups. Like Babies in Books reported that they saw at least two families they'd never seen before and then they could see through Facebook that those families were participating in the other challenges. 4H reported that they had new families show up at 4H events who then chose to join 4H. Um, we, the organizations like 4H that are private, sort of private organizations, that's membership-based, opened some of their activities to the public. Uh, at the very least, for some activities, we provided advertising, like searches, outdoor sort of active challenge. We can't tell what impact we had on that, but we boosted their advertising. And then we, uh, we included a number of unsponsored, unsupervised activities. I did not bring the numbers, but in the end, we had to decide what kind of impact did we have that we could in the STEPS grant, report on? And it was well into the hundreds and hundreds of children and hundreds and hundreds of adults who participated in at least one activity. Anecdotally, this is what we saw. We saw eighty to a hundred postings and comments on Facebook. And for example, one of those comments would be something like that the f- one family chose the Ten Free, Ten Tree Challenge, spent an entire afternoon investigating trees and then turned that into a Girl Scout badge for one of their children. So it had impact beyond just the activity itself. We could see that we developed a clientele. We certainly had families that were returning to event after event. We somewhat so- sort of failed in our registration. Our intent was to have a registration so we would know everybody who participated and we could survey them on which activities they had participated in. It was too much to keep up with. Um, we could see that people were alerting one another, calling, texting, messaging with questions, keeping each other alerted. Um, and was one, uh, thing that seemed very apparent to me is when the challenge ended and we went into summer, there were plenty of organized activities. But I keep the Sitkakids Facebook page going and what I do is kinda troll around and I'm looking for things I can post. There were no activities, no free and fun activities. Um, four families, kind of the zero to five to seven range during the summer. There were plenty of activities, but they were fee activities and organized, um, sports. And I think, uh, Chris Ronson helped me here. It's always nice to see, see what it is we're talking about. This is, um, a piece of artwork that is kind of STEPS related, encouraging people to go outdoors. And here is a video of the challenge. It ends very abruptly. Um, we're in the process of deciding whether to continue this in the spring or some other time period. We need to, uh, do better counting of, uh, participants, including those that are target populations, which are native, American Indian and pers- and households of more than one ethnicity and then, uh, people of, uh, uh, lower income. Um, and then it, we're, we also want to include more organizations, uh, should we do it again? Maybe organizations that don't typically put on activities for kids. Any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, yeah, go ahead, thank you. It was fun seeing all the pictures of those kids and, like, how is the weather nice all the time? It did not look like Sitka. Um, all right, so we are on to board member reports. Um, and we'll start down there with you, Andrew. And Eric, I'm gonna save you for last, just because, just because.
Uh, happy October, everybody. Um, uh, all I have to report is I, uh, made contact with my liaison school, Pacific High School, and I was able to go spend a Friday afternoon, or, um, midday, a few hours at Pacific High, uh, on a day that I wasn't working. Uh, I got to spend some time in the kitchen, uh, helped prepare the lunch and learn more about that program and about some of the, uh, challenges and needs, uh, that they have. Um, so look forward to learning more and, and hoping to advocate for that position, uh, and the importance of the work that's done there. Uh, then it was, uh, Friday, which is their, uh, Life Skills Day, so I got to sit in on, um, a gardening class and they had done some harvesting. Um, so really, I was just sitting with some students and we were slicing up apples that needed to be stored. And, um, it's just really great to get to interact with the students and talk to them a little bit, get to know them a little and, um, and their experiences at Pacific High. Um, and then also seeing the gardening area out back, um, then the whole new, I don't believe the new greenhouse is put together yet, but, um, it's, uh, it, they, they still have man- uh, Mandy has a full gardening program back there, which is really, really cool to see. Um, and just getting all of the students and faculty involved in that. Um, and it, I mean, that's truly a, that's a really important skill, uh, that I know nothing about. So, um, it was really, really neat to see the work, uh, firsthand, uh, first, from my perspective, um, and just get to spend some time with them. I missed their potato harvest. I know they went back and harvested. I know they went back and harvested, um, the quincea potatoes that they had planted in the spring, which I was there for the planting, but I had a rehearsal during the harvesting, so I wasn't able to go to the harvest. Um, but looking forward to spending more time, um, at Pacific High School. Uh, so that's really all extra I did as a board member this past month. Um, but do you want to acknowledge our colleague Eric, who, um, this is your last official full meeting. We'll have our special meeting, uh, next week, right, I think coming up? And are you there for that or is it? No, that's just swearing in new members. So I'd, okay, then I guess this is, this is that. So, um, you know, we only got to work together for a year plus, which, uh, I really, really enjoyed. And you have absolutely played the Obi-Wan Kenobi role amongst us as far as just being a mentor figure and, um, your calm, collected presence, ability to really think through the issues. I know you think you talk too much sometimes, but we're all listening when you do. And we hear, um, you, I just appreciate the conversations we've had at the board table and then sometimes after the board meeting, just in the parking lot for a few minutes and then other times that we talked. I will really miss your calm and collected presence and your experience. And, um, I know you, you should feel very proud of the six years that you gave to the Sika School Board. Um, and I appreciate the chance to learn from you and, uh, get to work with you a little bit. Um, and I'm, and I'm really happy for you that you get to move on to other things now at this point or whatever, however you want to reclaim this time. Uh, you deserve it and you've earned it. So thank you, Eric, for the time you've given to the Sika School Board.
Um, my reports can be short and sweet. Um, I, I did have the opportunity to be a part of the Sielaska Heritage Institute. Um, they, uh, gave a grant to, um, Brachley School for, um, STEAM, um, classes. Um, and so I was invited to sit in on that and, um, begin to brainstorm how that program would look like. I'm very appreciative of Caitlin Wolfie and Mark Sixby and, um, their whole team, um, on how they're going about integrating, um, cultural and traditional knowledge and marrying that with, uh, science, math, engineering, uh, and the arts. Um, and, um, it's just amazing to see, um, that progress and I can't wait to see more of that. Um, I, um, I was very thankful to hear about the reports, um, and the concern of the, um, seaplane outfit going on. I think that's a growing concern of the community of the placement. Um, and I think that we really need to look in on how we can support, um, better, um, research as to, um, how best the seaplane port could serve our community while also, you know, keeping in mind of the students that do attend our schools and who are among our main target audience of the achievement gap and, um, raising, um, you know, students that are, um, social and emotional, emotionally connected. Um, so very thankful for that on her, um, presentation tonight. And then, just to close up, Eric, you know, I've had the privilege of working with you within the community before, you know, I was roped into running for the school board. And, you know, you have always been, um, an active member within the community. Um, thank you so much for your time. Um, I know that we sat in on a few meetings, um, for the activities, um, fund, um, for the high school those last couple of years and they were just strange hours. And you always found a way to come in and, and do your part and, um, contribute. And we've definitely, um, profited from your dedication and your care. Um, and Sika's a better place for that. So thank you for your time and, and your thoughts and, um, you know, for the record, you, you don't really speak that long, um, words when they have, um, meaning, are meaningful and they need to be said. So sometimes that's, you know, could be enough, so never too much. So thank you so much, Eric. It's been a pleasure. We're gonna miss you. But we're very happy that you're moving along and to reclaim that time. So I hope you, I hope you enjoy that time with your family.
Um, let's see, as a board member, as a parent, I would like to say that, you know, I've, it's definitely been wonderful to see, I got three kids in three different schools and, um, you know, things are really, uh, really seem to be going well this year. Um, everybody seems to be happy with the way things are going with students and, and that's really fantastic to see. And then, you know, I just have to give props to, to Mr. Hauser and to, you know, all of the staff that, pretty much universally, everyone who stops me on the street is like, everyone's just so happy with the way things are going. So, um, you know, it's, it's just, uh, something to be proud of. It's a lot of hard work, so thank you all. As far as Eric goes, um, yeah, I'm gonna miss Eric a lot. Eric and I have, have gotten to work together in some different stuff in the community and I actually, I have a hard time thinking of somebody who I respect more than Eric. He, uh, (cough) you know, is, when it comes to a, a model citizen, you know, Eric's pretty much it. Uh, he's always set aside part of his time, whether it's coaching or, you know, some other youth, uh, sport stuff. And then, you know, his, his, what, six years now? Two terms on the school board? And, and I, nobody's more diligent than Eric. You know, Eric, you have extensive notes on going back and, you know, you, you take your commitment incredibly seriously. And, uh, I think you've represented all students and all staff of the district really well. Um, we missed. Hopefully, once this all blows over, we can get back to having early morning coffees from time to time. But I'd also like to express, uh, our thanks to the Van Sice family, behind every, uh, committed, uh, chairperson, committee person, whatever. There's a family that is, uh, missing a member of the dinner table from time to time and things like that. So, you know, uh, thank you to Mrs. Van Sice and the rest of the family over there for, for their sacrifice and they can have their Eric back now. So, thanks bud.
I'll go and then I'll give you all the time you want, Eric. Should we put a three minute timer on Eric?
He's not even really blushing though.
Um, so a quick report for me. I was able to go to Keet Gushahin a couple of weeks ago, um, as the liaison, which was really nice. Um, it's nice being back in the buildings. Um, and Mr. Principal Demmer gave me a tour and I got to go see how like the music classes work and the gym class and, you know, just see how, how things are working with all the mitigations they've put into place. And for the most part, it just, you know, felt very normal and kids are being kids. That was really fun for me just to get to the building again. Um, then Eric, I, yeah, everybody said such great things. Um, I, and I agree with what everybody has said. It's been an honor to serve with you these last three years. And, uh, I mean, we all know what kind of time and dedication it takes and the fact that you've done this for six years is incredible. And, um, and Eric is so passionate about what he does. And I can't even tell you how many hours and hours and hours and hours we've spent on the phone together because every issue you take very seriously and, you know, very intentional about it and very thoughtful about everything. And, um, and it's just, it's been great to have you to bounce ideas off of and, and to... All said, I know your wife is gonna be grateful to have you home. Um, you work harder than anybody I've ever known and so I, I hope you feel a little bit of stress and relaxation from getting this one off your plate now. Um, but you're welcome to come to school board meetings whenever you want and join us. Um, yeah, just thank you. Thank you for being a leader to all of us and, um, really showing all of us how to talk about this, so.
Well, thank you, thank you to board members. And, uh, um, I wrote stuff down so I wouldn't get too, um, windbaggy and then pretty soon it'd be done with this old gas bag will be, will be done. But, uh, no, anyways, uh, it, it's been a good run. And before I launch into this, or, um, I'd like to, uh, recognize Dan and your, your co-partner Alice for all the years. That was, uh, that's one of the, the big pluses of being on the board is I got, got to know you. And, uh, it's really phenomenal. Uh, um, I cannot think of a, another community, and I'd like to, somebody could certainly let me know where the, the archives that you and Alice have obtained over the probably decades. And it's, it's historical. It's a historical record from assembly meetings to school board to community events. Um, entire generations are on your film and they're priceless. And, uh, just, that's, that's been great. And thank you for your time. I know that, uh, that the hours are late oftentimes and the weather's bad, but you or Alice are always here and you're recording history. And, uh, it's, it's really, really appreciated for that. So, um, going back to when I came on the board, you were talking about, you know, my board members talked about longevity. But really, when I came on the board six years ago, um, there were three, Jen McNichol and I came in at the same time. But we had three obviously other board members. And, uh, Tim Fulton was, I believe, when I came in on his eighth year, uh, third term. Uh, Tom Conley, pediatrician, was, I wanna say probably eleven years at that point on the school board. And then we had, uh, Cass Puck, who I wanna say was at fourteen years, you know. So there was some huge longevity that, uh, in history and background that, um, helped both Jen and I, you know, get our feet and stuff like that. So I'm really kind of a newbie really compared to those folks. And there were others before them that, uh, really, um, you know, set the bar. For me, uh, and I've never had a chance to, uh, talk to her in person about it, but it was Molly Kapler, who was on the school board. And I, I remember when, when our kids were young and just how she engaged and, and different things. So it was, like, she doesn't know it, but a strong mentor for that. Um, but just, um, going back a little bit in history, some of the hot topics when I came on the board, I think if I do, if I do my math right, which I'm terrible at, was November or October twenty fourteen or something. But, uh, our district was, um, one of the big things that was controversial or out there was the integrated math program. Uh, that was something that, uh, actually we're not, you know, really supposed to come in with an agenda as a board member, but it was definitely on my radar, not as an agenda, but, um, it was an area that we were struggling with extremely, um, with one of our family members. Uh, and the other one was, uh, She-Ra law, if I pronounce that right. We were, we were a district that was, you know, invoking She-Ra law or something. There was, there was a big hoopla going on and by just a few people, but it was like we were some kind of dark force that was doing something bad. And so that's kind of what I walked into and it was interesting. But the, the She-Ra law, we were able to kind of get that moved on very quickly. But the integrated math took, took some time. Um, and I'll jump back to that a little, just quickly. Some other things that, uh, were, came along in those six years were substantial budget cuts. Um, oil revenues started to really plummet and, uh, that really affected us. Then we had the, um, kind of the slash and burn, uh, from the state government that was just devastating with some of what we were trying to figure out what to do budget wise. And I know every district across the state was dealing with that. Um, declining enrollment, uh, we had significant delays. Um, you know, Frank, you can, I mean, you're, you're in the thick of it as well, where we didn't know what our budget was gonna be until like the end of summer, you know. Just, it was a, it was a train wreck for students and staff and everybody. And, uh, but those were the things we, we went through. Uh, in, leading into that were, were some of the, when I think back to the six years, um, the, where we packed the house basically three years in a row was regarding the Performing Arts Center. Um, we had anywhere from my records eighty to a hundred and ten people, uh, show up in the library. And we'd have sometimes thirty or thirty plus people speaking to the Performing Arts Center. And, uh, the, the gist of it was, is that was in the same funding pool as the staff. And, uh, and it really invoked some passion. And, uh, and I, I, I've gotten flamed enough that my skin's pretty leathery, but I was the one that made the reference that basically what we were paying for the Performing Arts Center was equivalent to two teachers. And that settled with some people and didn't settle with some people. But that, you know, that's what the funding. And it wasn't that I was wanting to see it close, but it was just, um, you know, our mission to treat and take care of all kids. And so it did generate three years. And it was interesting that for three years in a row, that was during our budget hearings, which would maybe be nineteen million dollars, twenty million dollars. Um, that was a price tag of like three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, but that was the only thing that was talked about on those, those meetings, you know. And it was kind of interesting, I'll just leave it at that. But the good news is it generated discussions and, uh, uh, true to form, the Fine Arts Camp with Roger Schmidt's leadership, um, they were, the solutions were able to come around. And so we still enjoy that building and we've had some relief as far as the funding for that. So, but it was, it was very interesting. Uh, another area that was with the budget, you know, we, it's natural to have turf fours and things like that. And, uh, Pacific High School, uh, once again fell into the crosshairs, uh, for consolidation, maybe moving to the high school, Sika High School, uh, shutting it down altogether. And, uh, Elias Erickson and I, along with much help with Cassie Olin, uh, did a deep dive into all of the covenants and things like that. And, uh, um, I'd have to look back on all the notes, but it basically, um, illustrated that it was a, a very important asset in our, our district. And, uh, I am hopeful that that discussion is permanently put to bed, you know, for, for that school. Um, but it was, it was a, it was an interesting period of time. Uh, and on that note, we've got, we have five schools and I hope that we can maintain five schools. Uh, if you can think of those as five pillars, you know, support pillars. Um, you remove one of those pillars and not everything would fall down, but it's a significant impact. And, uh, if anybody's still out there listening, I know that the principals have headed home. Uh, Laura, thank you for being here. You're, and, but really, uh, all five schools, just looking at each other and as they are now, as interdependent and supporting each other, uh, because it is a really truly a great district. Um, and, uh, just that collaboration, uh, I think it's pivotal also for like the middle school, uh, looking, you know, helping parents and they're doing this now. What are the options for, for a student? You know, we have Sika High School, we have Pacific High School. Let's, let's work and find a good fit for your, for your child. And those are great discussions that are going on. Um, we also during, uh, my time, we had, uh, there were, there were some, there were some challenges going on with administration and staff, not all administration and not all staff. But, uh, uh, there was, there was, there were some challenges that occurred. And, uh, we felt it as a board and, uh, there, there, we were guided by policy and, uh, bylaws and, and things. And, uh, I would strongly recommend that we do our very best to stay within those. Um, there are very, very rare cases, and it was in my case and other board members, that we, uh, for various reasons, had to step outside some of that stuff to be able to, uh, ascertain really what was going on and what we needed to be doing to try and, uh, get things cohesive again. Yeah, I don't recommend that that, we go through that necessarily again, but all I can say, it was a, I don't regret what I had to do. It was necessary. Um, but in the end, we, uh, I look over at today with, uh, John Holst coming in and helping us and, uh, the superintendent, uh, interim search and then our search for a superintendent. Uh, and we had wonderful candidates and, uh, we're, we're, we're in good shoes. Uh, and we had wonderful candidates, and, uh, we're, we're, we're in good shoes. We're, we're in good, good hands, I meant to say. And, uh, thank you for that. Um, looking through here, today, some of the things, um, that we're working through, and I'm, I'm, you know, I appreciate in my time on the board, and this has been a lot driven by staff and admin, is even when, uh, Sandra and, uh, Laura, when she was at the high school, um, when I started on the board, it was always called the, the college fair. You know, it was, we're having a college fair. And I, it wasn't just necessarily me, but it was others said, well, what about career? And, um, so it's now a college and career fair. And, uh, I really appreciate the fact that we have a district that takes value in vocational education. And I, I'm gonna call it vocational education. I'm not gonna call it CTE. I'm gonna call it vocab. Just, that's just me. But we have the finest facilities of a public high school in the state of Alaska. And, uh, we have supportive staff and people like that. It is an incredible gem that we have up there at that high school. I work in heavy industry, and I can guarantee you that this is not gender-based. Uh, any young, uh, woman, young man, there are countless, uh, career opportunities, and they can get their foot in the door right here at our high school. And, uh, there's a dire need for skilled labor and, uh, skilled trades. And, uh, so anyways, I'll leave it at that. I would just honestly hope that we can all, as a board, as you guys, really promote that. Um, I'm not dissing college, but, uh, we, we've lost our workforce, and there's good jobs there. Um, oh, and on that note, and this, this may again get me torched, um, we, we have five branches of the military. And I know that Sika doesn't always, well, I'm gonna leave it at that. We have five branches of military. And I want to say that in the time, maybe one, maybe two students a year of our graduates, you know, that, that's maybe go into that option. And I think sometimes people think that, you know, their, their child's gonna be in danger. But I was, I was in the military. Uh, our family goes deep, and, uh, there's a lot of career and a lot of opportunities in the different branches of the military for students that are not involved with blowing things up or hurting people. And maybe we can promote more of that for, for kids as an option after school. Um, COVID, that, this, to think of how we've navigated through the COVID as a community and as a district is, is quite remarkable. Um, it's, it's incredible how hard people are working. And, uh, I'm hoping that we can continue in a civilized fashion. Uh, I was deeply saddened and alarmed, but not surprised at some of the same, the assembly meeting. And I think Blossom, I guess you were there, 'cause I know that you spoke. And, uh, I, I'm really hopeful that we don't have that in our board meetings. And, uh, it, it may, it may happen, but, uh, we need to, as a board, need to stick to that preamble that's read, you know, as far as, uh, decorum in how people, uh, behave. Our children are given a grade standard for courtesy and respect, and I basically hold adults at a higher standard, you know, than that. So hopefully that's not a storm that you guys have to weather, but, uh, um, you know, stand firm in, uh, holding people accountable to be mature adults when they have differences of opinion. Uh, some things looming on the horizon that they're gonna continue to, that, that we need to continue to work through that are gonna be coming along. Um, we, we have, uh, historic drama that we're addressing, and we need to keep addressing. Uh, we need to make sure that, uh, as things come along, if, uh, critical race theory, hopefully they'll change that to just calling it factual history, you know, that if, you know, making sure that students aren't being held punitive for things that happened in the past, but at the same time, uh, that they know the good, the bad, and the ugly that happened in our past, so that we can learn from it and be able to have discussions about it. Um, there's a lot of, I'm sixty now, and I would have never thought some of the things that I'm seeing happening in our country, I, I mean, I was old enough to watch what was happening in the sixties, but not old enough to participate. Um, but, you know, it had a profound impact on all the upheaval. But I look at what's going on today, and it's very concerning with, uh, civil rights that are declining in some areas, voter rights, uh, that are being, you know, the most sacred thing that we have in our country is your right to vote, and, and the things that are going on to undermine that. Uh, and just, uh, people, you know, and even, uh, women's, women's health rights and things like that. And you wonder, well, you know, these are adult things. We're a school district, but this is what our students are walking into, and this is what maybe is going on in their homes. So it's, we have a lot of work, and there's a lot of things on the horizon. But just do what you guys do. Uh, you know, look at it objectively. Uh, leave your politics, leave your, your faith. I don't mean that in a bad way, but leave it out in the parking lot. And come in here and, and seek neutral ground and, uh, compromise and do your best. Um, 'cause right now, uh, unlike any time that I can recall in our country, we have extreme, very, very extreme polarization going on. And when you have extreme polarization, you have paralyzation. And we are rapidly, we have become paralyzed in some of our movement across our country. So, um, this is where educators and, and, you know, helping our youth and children understand what's right, what's wrong. And, 'cause they're, they're walking into this stuff. So anyways, it's probably bedtime now, isn't it? The, the curfew hour has hit? Sorry. Um, but in the future, just make sure as a board, follow facts, not fiction. Uh, have mutual respect, which we've always had. I'm proud of that. You can agree to disagree, but just do so respectfully. And, uh, it's okay if it's a three to two vote or four to one vote. It doesn't always have to be five to zero. And, and feel good about what you, what you, what you believe in. Um, and, uh, also, I, I brought, uh, a yearbook with me. Our oldest son Tristan would probably, uh, not be appreciative, but, uh, this is his yearbook, twenty fifteen. The reason I have it, 'cause our younger son was a freshman. And, um, I spent seven years at the high school, teaching elective. I did about ten years community schools, coaching, and then six years high school coaching. And so there's about a span of about ten years of students that I really kind of knew who they are. But now, now I've gotten old enough that I don't. Um, but the reason I brought this annual in, in this yearbook, is that if anybody is still out there listening, um, you might have one of these laying around. And I encourage you, don't read what's written in it, because you'll, you'll, you'll have a heart attack. But disregard what's written in there. But look at the pictures. And even with the time that I spent in this town, working and doing things, I can thumb through this one yearbook, and there are countless students or pictures that I don't know who they are. I mean, I, I see the picture. It's like, I don't, I don't remember that, that, that girl or that boy. And, or I vaguely remember. And part of my point is, is that in our country and across the country, and it's not a bad thing, we celebrate the successes, you know, th- those that shine a good light on our school. And those are great things. I support that. But every, every child's got something that they're good at. And, uh, you know, you think about these kids that go through our district, and, you know, they, they had hopes and dreams and aspirations. But, you know, where are they today? And we can't always shine the light on everybody, but I would really like to see as we move forward, the press, ourselves. Um, you know, it's good to celebrate the, the academics, the athletics, and the activities, but there's a lot of other things that we can celebrate for, for kids. And, um, but it really struck me when I looked through this, after all of the involvement, how many that I just don't know, you know, and, uh, where they are today. And, uh, so anyways, and, uh, anyways, and in closing, uh, I'm gonna, uh, borrow something from my colleague, uh, Jen McNichol, when, when she finished up her time on the board. She's a good friend. We go way back. And basically, our job as a board is governance, you know, and, uh, it's the action of, or manner of governing. And, uh, that's really what our job is. And, uh, we do a good job of keeping the drama out of it. And, uh, I know that all of you and, um, you know, your future board is, is gonna be, is just, can be just fine, you know? You guys will do just fine without me. You won't have to sit here for a half hour listening to me. Um, and, uh, just remember that, uh, um, you know, just do the best you can. And I'll leave this at, tonight with a quote from a, a writer that I follow. His name is, uh, Jim Wright, W R I G H T. And one of the things he says is, "If you want a better country, you need to be a better citizen." So anyways, thank you for the time. Uh, I don't regret it at all. It's already backfilled. I hate to say, you know, we're just gonna keep on going. But, uh, it's okay. But, uh, you guys do awesome work, and we have a district that truly, truly is unique. And, and I can say that, because I, I grew up in an environment that, uh, I hated school. And I hated it for certain reasons. And it wasn't until I moved to Sika in ninety-four that I finally got my mind wrapped around that there is good schools out there. And so if there is any staff out there still listening, parents, staff present, um, thank you for that, because this is pretty darn special here. So, thank you.
Eric, um, different without you here, for sure. Um, hey, I just wanted to take a second. You're Ayana, right? Am I saying that correctly? Ayana, yeah. She's our new student representative. So, um, Ayana Gluth, and I don't know if you wanna sit up here tonight and give a report, if you'd like. Mr. Hauser is saying yes. I saw, come on up. You're involved with Nutcracker, right? So, yeah, so she's gonna be attending late a lot of times. But, yeah, have a seat over there. And if you don't mind, just taking a second to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about you. That'd be great.
I'm Ayana Gluth. Um, I am a senior at Sika High School, and I'm eighteen years old. Um, I am heavily involved in dance. I'm very heavily involved with, uh, theater and a lot of the art, uh, on in general. Um, I, I have three younger brothers, and all is the music teacher at Mount Edgecombe. And my dad is the senior pastor at, uh, um, I've lived in Sika for about ten years now, and I have gotten to Sika High, and we are student representative.
Ah, thank you, and welcome. You sing, right? It's you that sings the national anthem. Yes, she has a beautiful voice. I was gonna say, I was pretty sure that was you. So, yeah. Well, thank you, and welcome. Um, all right. So we're on item, where are we? Item twelve on our.
All right. Thank you very much. I've got a few things. We'll start with the budget report. Oh, you've got the budget, uh, in the packet. Um, just kind of, uh, moving through, the one thing I wanted to highlight is, uh, on the last, um, month's board meeting, uh, we were preparing for the audit. Uh, we, about two weeks ago, uh, maybe a little over two weeks ago, started the auditing process, which usually takes a week, a little bit over a week, just for the whole process to go through. Um, and so my business office, uh, is still working the process. Uh, and, uh, the hope, obviously, is that, uh, in November, that audit will be, uh, delivered to the board, uh, for review. Um, so we're working through that. And then the business office has been working really hard to get all of the materials and everything in place, uh, for that. So that's kind of an update, uh, where, uh, from the budget perspective. And so hopefully, like I said, uh, early in November, uh, at the AASBE meeting is when, uh, we're hoping and planning on having that, uh, audit report, uh, to all the board members. Any questions on the budget? No? Well, I, moving on to the enrollment report, and this is one that's exciting. And so we've talked about the enrollment right now. And last time we went and talked, uh, for the FY twenty-two budget, we built and projected an enrollment for one thousand one hundred and thirty-three students. At this time, we have one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight students enrolled, so we are above our projections, which is a good thing. Um, of course, the open enrollment and the student count for Oasis goes through October twenty-second. And so we still have through October twenty-second, um, to hopefully pick up some more students. And so if you're watching the school board meeting, and you are considering moving to Sika, uh, as you've heard, this is an amazing school district, it's an amazing community. And, uh, I would encourage you, because my wife and I are new to Sika ourselves, uh, please come. It's a great place. So, uh, but we are gonna be, uh, continue to have those, um, you know, counts taking place, uh, through October twenty-second. And, uh, then we'll be submitting our, uh, final count, uh, to the state, uh, in November. So, uh, that's an enrollment report. And then I'm gonna go ahead and jump into, uh, my superintendent's report. I have a PowerPoint for you. Imagine that. So, uh, we'll go ahead and jump in. And Mr. Ron is, uh, kind enough to kind of, uh, run the, uh, PowerPoint for me. So we're gonna do our, our traditional, I look at him and I nod three or four times, and he goes ahead and he moves forward. So, um, this week, I'm gonna start off today by showing, uh, kind of a little bit what's going on around our schools. And today, I want to take a moment, uh, to take a little bit closer look at, uh, Baronoff Elementary School. And so I have a, a little video. I was, uh, kind of looking through, uh, Facebook and happened to notice just a really cute video that Principal Ekron had put on, uh, Facebook. And I just wanted to thank her for putting that on there. And I just wanted to share that video, in case you had not had a chance to see it. The volume is a little bit quiet, so. And so I wanted to show a little bit of that video, because one of the things I really appreciated was, you know, even in our, in our classes and looking at our students, even though we have all these mitigations in place, we really are moving forward with full day in-person, um, you know, schooling. And students are having a great time. They're learning, they're engaging. Uh, during recess, you saw students out socially distanced, having fun, playing, and doing all the things that we really want our students to be able to engage in and participate in, um, when they come to school, when they're in their classes. And so I wanted to kind of share that bit. Um, uh, in addition, our student athletes continue to make headlines, too. I'd like to thank Garland Kennedy of the City Sentinel for spotlighting our Sika High School student athletes this month. Um, one thing we hear from our student athletes again and again is their joy of being able to return to competition this year. Um, one Sika High School swimmer said, quote, "It was so weird to be back to normal after not being normal for so long, but it was so much fun. I had fun, and that was the most important part." And I think that is something that I think we all appreciate, is our students being able to go and have fun and engage in some of these activities, um, that over the last year, uh, in some, uh, they haven't always been able to participate in. Um, I also had a few updates from our activities director, uh, Mr. Kupa from Sika High School. Uh, as you heard, um, swimming had to meet last Saturday, winning both Friday and Saturday meets. Uh, wrestling has started. Uh, volleyball did excellent in Ketchikan two weeks ago, and I believe some of the team will be heading to Juneau next week. Um, and our DDF is heading to Skagway to start defending its five consecutive state championships and regional championships titles. So that's a pretty impressive feat there. Um, last couple of updates, I've ha- uh, I've asked for volunteers for a strategic planning action plan teams. Uh, now the action plan teams comprise the parent staff, community members, and students are meeting, and the next phase of the process is underway. Uh, we have over forty total parent staff, community members participating in action plan teams that align with the six strategies identified in our action plan process last April. I'm excited to see the plans these teams develop to support our SSD staff and students. And we are meetings, meeting on Mondays and Thursdays. And I think in the last email update, I kind of sent- And I think in the last email update I kind of sent to everybody, there's times on there as well, if you'd like to, uh, stop by and participate. We do have some representatives on the board on those meeting. So thank you very much. Um, so, uh, I know, I'm looking forward to the day when I don't have to do a COVID-19 update, um, uh, but unfortunately, we're not there yet, uh, but we are getting there. Um, I have some encouraging data about our mitigation plans today and we also have some potential game-changing news on the horizon. So, on October twenty-sixth, FDA Independent Vaccine Advisor Committee will discuss Pfizer's request to the FDA to authorize its COVID-19 vaccine for those ages five to eleven. Uh, the vaccine for children will be about a third of the dose as that, uh, for adults and given twenty-one days apart, um, vaccines might be available in a matter of weeks, um, in the Halloween, uh, in the Halloween to Thanksgiving timeframe, according to some reports. Um, so I bring this up really because I think it might be a good time for parents that might be interested to, um, start talking to pediatricians or medical providers about that. And then also, uh, in case you hadn't heard, just a few days ago, we also learned that Merck will soon seek approval for an antiviral pill that reduced hospitalizations and deaths by half in people currently infected with the coronavirus. Uh, this treat, treatment would be significant because it would be in a pill form and wouldn't require an IV. So that's another thing that potentially on the horizon is gonna be positive for us. Uh, in case you didn't know, but I'm sure you probably did, our current alert level in Sitka is still high. Uh, we had a spike after the Labor Day weekend that knocked us off course for a bit, but look at this, cases have begun to decrease and we are heading in the right direction. Um, remember that we want to get out of the red, that field of red right there, which is, uh, quite a significant field of red, um, to look at. Um, but, uh, I did hear also that numbers have dropped, uh, even since this morning when I updated this slide, so that's even more good news. We also have some encouraging news related to our mitigations in SSD. As of today, we have five active COVID cases connected to our SSD buildings. That number represents approximately zero point four percent of our total student and staff population, so less than half a percent. Obviously, that's a very small percentage. Our mitigations are ensured, uh, ensured that, uh, previous active cases declined and did not escalate. Uh, a district with no masking had about the same number of active cases associated with an elementary school as we did at Keet earlier in the month. Within a week, case counts in that other district's school without masking quadrupled and the entire school shut down for two weeks. The superintendent of that district said that the active cases in the school without masks doubled every two days. Quote, "If we left the school open for another week," he said, "we would have probably had everybody in the whole school who possibly could have been infected." He said the district didn't act fast enough to require masks. Our layered mitigations in SSD, including masking and testing, helped us identify and isolate our positive cases, keep them from escalating, keep our schools open, and bring students back to in-person learning safely and without lengthy or necessarily quarantines. The information on the active cases connected to SSD buildings is right on our front website and will continue to be updated daily, Monday through Friday. And also, just a reminder, this is a list of people in our schools who happen to have COVID. Um, as we all know, people contract COVID from many situations and locations, including travel, from family members and friends, or out in the community. In several of these cases in SSD, students then came to school with COVID-like symptoms. So I really would just like to remind parents again to keep students home if they or anyone among their, your family or close contacts has COVID or COVID-like symptoms. So we're talking about encouraging news, uh, today and that's really important. Uh, but we also need to be cautious and careful because we cannot let up our mitigations too soon while we still have high levels of COVID in our community. One of the many remarkable things about this time period is the amount of real-time data we have on COVID mitigations in schools. So we can see right now that we'll happen, we see right now what will happen if we let up our mitigations too soon while we're still at these high levels. And so what we have here, uh, is the state data on Sitka and another region of the state. Sitka is on the left and the region on the right, and the other regions on the right. Now remember that the state is using a seven-day-per-one-hundred-thousand calculation of COVID cases for all regions, so we can make these comparisons of the level of COVID in various communities. This is the COVID case rate for August twenty-third, our first day of school. You can see that Sitka, on the left, had a higher case rate than this other region. We had five hundred and eighty-six COVID cases per one hundred thousand in Sitka on our first day of school, while this other region had three hundred and ninety-seven on that day. So we and Sitka had a higher COVID case rate in our community on that day than this other region of the state. The schools in these two districts had many of the same COVID mitigations in place, except we and Sitka also had masks. Remember that masks are especially important in schools this year because with new CDC guidance, students who are masked and distanced are not considered close contacts in a classroom setting and do not need to isolate. So again, on our first day of school, Sitka had a higher COVID case rate than this other region on the same day. But three weeks later, the district that started without masking reported ten times more COVID cases in schools than SSD. They have had multiple school closures because of outbreaks and multiple school closures because of COVID-related staff shortages. Half of the schools in this district have switched to masking. This is really important data for us at this point because we can see exactly where we will be if we let up our mitigations before COVID cases come down from these high levels in our community. Uh, this other district started with three hundred and ninety-seven cases, um, per one hundred thousand cases, uh, COVID cases in seven days, and we were just there a few days ago. But the good news is that our cases are coming down in Sitka, we're heading in the right direction, and we have a good plan. We just stay the course for a little bit while, longer. Um, in addition, I heard it said recently that, quote, "The Sitka School District was so far, has, I heard it, quote, "said, 'The Sitka School District has so far escaped some of the worst outcomes experienced by schools in other parts of the country during the pandemic.'" And while I appreciate the recognition of the progress of our school year in, uh, SSD so far, um, I did wanna kind of push back a little on the idea that somehow, uh, we've just been lucky and, quote, "escaped these worst outcomes," end quote. I'm here to tell you that that's, there's nothing lucky about it. We started with COVID in our community, then, we started with more COVID in our community than other regions, but we've had significantly less COVID and COVID-related disruptions in our schools. And that's not an accident. That's because of our mitigations. But most importantly, it's because we've all been working together, the school board, SSD staff and administration, the community, parents and guardians and students. We have all been working together to implement these mitigations that are keeping school, students in school and keeping our schools open. I'd just like to take a, uh, moment to bring everybody back to August for a second. This is a slide I shared at the board meeting then. I was talking about the importance of in-person learning and the big steps forward we were taking this year with bringing students back to full-time in-person learning. I asked everyone to look back, um, at last fall and compare where we were. Now, I'd like everyone to compare where we were in August to where we are now. We brought all of our students back to full-time in-person learning this year and we have already provided our students a quarter of nearly seamless in-person instruction during what has been called, quote, "The worst point in the pandemic," end quote. We don't know what will happen tomorrow, but that's something to be proud of today. What can I say? John Holtz, you all recognize John Holtz. So I, I just thought I'd share this picture with you really fast. Um, this is me and of course, Mr. Holtz. Uh, this is right when my wife and I drove off the ferry in Sitka. And I think, Amy, you might have taken this picture if I'm not mistaken, so, um, yeah, quality work, good lighting in the background. So, Mr. Holtz was there to welcome us, uh, and hand me the keys to the district. Um, I was, it was a beautiful sunny day in June, COVID cases in Sitka were extremely low, and I didn't have a mask on and there wasn't a mask in sight. And I really do want everybody to know, I want to get back there, too. But what I want more is to keep our kids safely in school. And here's the good news, the plan that is going to get us back there, the fastest, is the same plan that's going to keep our kids in school. We know our protocols are working. We know where we should be without them, where we would be without them, based on data from districts in Alaska and all around the country. We see district after district switching to mitigations that SSD already has in place. We simply need to stay the course for a little while longer until our cases in Sitka come down from those high levels. And as I've said before, schools don't drive community transmission, but what happens in the community does affect our schools. And in the meantime, this is the best news of all. All of our schools are open to full-time in-person learning. We are miles ahead of where we were last year and no one should forget that. Our students haven't. A Sitka High School student, uh, spoke at a recent assembly meeting about how grateful her word, it was her word, um, every was, everyone was to be back and fully, to fully in-person with normal school day, even if that school day includes masks, just for the time being. We don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. Our numbers or active cases in our schools may change, but we have our mitigations in place and keeping them in place means that we have the best chances of keeping our students in school and we keep moving steadily forward, without U-tunes or starts and stops or disruptions, until we again reach the bright days that are just ahead. Ah, and now, let us return to our regularly scheduled programming, the actual business of education and talk about the results of PEAKS testing. As I reported, um, at the last board meeting, we were getting ready to distribute our PEAKS testing. We did receive those from the state and I wanted to talk and spend a little bit of time to just, uh, go over, uh, some of our PEAKS testing results. Um, and I thought I'd include this little, uh, piece of information. I just happened to see this twenty-years-ago feature, uh, in the Sitka Sentinel when I was starting to work on this presentation. And I thought it was interesting that twenty years ago, the Sitka School Board was talking about standardized testing and we just happened to be talking about it today, too. So I'd like to make a couple of just general comments about standardized testing first, and this is, uh, personal for me, um, because, as I've said before, I'm sitting here, uh, as a superintendent, not because school is always easy for me, but really because it wasn't. I struggled in school, especially with reading. I never took the PEAKS test, but in my day, it was the California Aptitude Test, the CAT. Um, but I'm confident that if I had taken the PEAKS test as a seventh grader in Palmer Junior High School, where I went to junior high, uh, yes, we called it junior high back then, uh, I would not have been found proficient. Uh, and yet largely because I found a little success in the high school sport, here I am. So I'd like everyone to keep in mind what standardized testing shows us and what it doesn't. It shows us a moment in time. It does not show us the full extent of students' potential. Assessments are tools that help us support students and inform instruction. There are one data point of our students and schools. Other data points include assessments like measure students' growth, like MAP testing, graduation rate, acceptances at colleges and universities, scholarships, apprenticeships, jobs and certifications. I just ran into the mom of one of my former students. Uh, her son graduated a couple of years ago. He was never interested in going to college and started welding in school, in our school CTE program. I actually think I referenced him during my job interview as well. So I just happened to run into the mom again. Uh, and upon graduation, he was accepted into an apprenticeship program. His mom just told me that he's thrilled because he was just offered a lucrative welding job in Antarctica. So he is getting ready to go to Antarctica for six months. And this is a couple of years after he has graduated high school and he's looking at buying his first home. He just bought a new four-wheeler and he's got a new truck. And so he is doing very well for himself and doing something that he loves. And I think that's so important. Success comes to our students in many different ways and with many different measures. And so I just wanted to preface that as we kind of look at talking about standardized testing. So, let's talk specifically about the two thousand twenty-one PEAKS assessment. Now, this ELA, or English Language Arts and Mathematics assessments, were administered in the spring of two thousand twenty-one to students in grades three through nine. The assessments measured a student's understanding of Alaska standards. And remember that standards and assessments differ from state to state. This is the letter that went out from the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development, or DED, about PEAKS. It talks about some specific limitations to the two thousand twenty-one assessment due to COVID. It says, quote, "Participation rates varied significantly from district to district and among demographic categories. Given the low overall participation rate and the high variability in participation amongst student groups, DED cautions against comparing two thousand twenty-one PEAKS data to previous years at the statewide level," end quote. So another limitation of PEAKS data, which I already alluded to, relates to its measurement of student growth. I have seen students show grade levels worth of growth in other assessments, specifically MAP testing, but that growth isn't always reflected in PEAKS because students may not yet have reached that proficient level that gets reported. So in other words, a student may have made huge advantages and advances in a semester's work, but PEAKS doesn't capture all those advances until students reach a certain level of proficiency when it's reported as proficient. This letter from DED, kind of, well, it addresses that and reads, quote, "Beginning this school year, DED is moving toward a new approach to statewide assessment that will provide results for teachers that can immediately inform instruction, will better display student growth and needs, and align with interim assessments administered independently by most of Alaska's school districts." So the state is now moving away from PEAKS, so PEAKS won't be administered again. This is the last PEAKS data we are going to have. The new assessment is based on MAP testing I just talked about, so we already administer that in SSD and I'll talk a little bit more about the new assessment shortly. But first, let's take a moment and look at the results from our PEAKS data for the SSD from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one. I'd also like to take a moment to thank Laura Rogers, who is still here. Thank you, Laura. She is staying through this and she, uh, is our testing coordinator in addition to Assistant Principal, uh, Blatchley. Uh, I wanna thank her for putting this in the next couple of slides together for us and for providing some, uh, analysis of historical trends. So keep in mind that cohorts in Sitka are small, so there can be some significant fluctuation in scores from year to year. On the left, we have our English Language Arts scores, uh, percent proficient, and on the right, math. We see that scores are considered higher and more stable in ELA than in math. This may reflect the emphasis on reading at the elementary level with programs like walk reading and so forth. However, math scores before COVID were steadily climbing in grades six, eight and nine. I felt that that was something that was important to look at. So again, this is our percent proficient, uh, students by grade level. These are SSD's ELA scores as compared to state scores. SSD is blue, so you can see that our ELA scores are consistently above the state average at every grade level. And if you look down at the bottom right-hand side, you will see, again, orange is the state, blue is SSD. That is the results from the PEAKS test for two thousand twenty-one, last spring test results. And again, you can see all of those, uh, blue lines, uh, our students scored higher proficient than, uh, the state's report. These are our math scores. Again, as compared with state scores, SSD in general has a higher percent proficient as compared to the state. In two thousand eighteen, every grade level exceeded the state's scores. In two thousand nineteen and twenty-one, the only grades whose proficiency levels were below the state average are the same cohort, grade seven in two thousand nineteen, grade nine, two years later in two thousand twenty-one. Although PEAKS had some limitations, we are losing it as a data point in the future, just as we're beginning to get enough years of information to use it for decision-making. But we will have a new statewide assessment that is replacing PEAKS. And the new statewide assessment will better reflect learning throughout the school year. The new assessment, as I said, will be delivered similarly to the MAP test, a test that measures student growth and has been used in SSD for, uh, for years in grades two through eleven. This new assessment system will also include a summative test. The federal Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSAFR short, requires states to administer a statewide summative assessment in mathematics, language arts and science. The assessment must align with state academic standards, provide information and attainment of standards and indicate performance at grade level. So, this is the new post-PEAKS assessment timeline. This school year is year one. Districts will administer MAP growth interim assessments for grades three through nine in reading, language arts, uh, language usage, math in the fall, winter and spring. And a new summative assessment in the spring for English Language Arts and Mathematics. And you can see under year one, there will continue to be the three MAP assessments and a new summative assessment that will take place in the spring, uh, of this year. This new summative assessment will help provide benchmark information for, uh, future tests to the state. Next year, year two, the district will administer MAP growth interim assessments for grades three through nine in fall and winter and a summative assessment in the spring. Once fully implemented, the new assessment system will reduce the number of standardized tests for most students in SSD and will provide teachers immediate results from interim MAP tests. Students in grade, in fifth grade, eighth grade and tenth grade will continue to take the science assessment. And just anecdotally, I've seen more students enthusiasm about MAP testing than PEAKS testing in some of the interactions I've had with students. As an educator, I appreciate that MAP testing leads to conversations, included, including with parents, about areas of positive student growth and not only to conversations about areas where students may not yet be proficient. So that's the end of my update. And now just a couple of announcements. And, uh, I do have one more student video I'd like to, um, show. Uh, and it was, uh, already mentioned by, uh, Sandra that, uh, Sitka High School will be hosting a college and career fair tomorrow, uh, Thursday, October seventh, with over forty colleges and university and career opportunities represented, and there are COVID mitigations that will be followed very closely. Uh, I mentioned it earlier today, but I also just wanted to remind everyone, we do have twelve cross-country runners who will be representing SSD at state this weekend. And, uh, we are still going strong and putting, uh, some of our school videos on our new, uh, YouTube site, so check out that if you wanna see our school board meetings, but also some, uh, videos. And if anyone has any questions about vaccine- And if anyone has any questions about vaccines or any information, that's there as well. And so with that, I'd like to end with a couple of our Sitka High School students who recently did this video to walk students through the new rapid COVID testing process at SSD. Our new rapid testing program is helping us identify positive cases and bringing students back to in-person learning without lengthy or unnecessary quarantines. Our student athletes, our students who participate in extracurricular activities, other students are all testing already, so please join them and test at your school weekly. Permission forms are available online or in your front office or your school. And our building test schedule is as follows. Monday is Sitka High School, Tuesday is Blatchley Middle School, Wednesday is Bearinoff Elementary School, Thursday is Keet Gushin, and Friday is Pacific High School. And now, here are Tony Smith and Stephen Harmon showing us how to test properly.
Hey guys, I'm the editor. Today you're going to be watching a video on how to do the COVID-19 rapid test, brought to you by your favorite upperclassmen, Stephen Harmon and Tony Smith. Now, without further ado, please enjoy.
Before starting, wash or sanitize your hands. Make sure they're dry before starting. Remove test card from pouch and lay flat on table. The card must stay flat on the table for the entire test. Make sure the blue control line is present in the result window. Remove dropper bottle cap. Hold dropper bottle straight over top hole, not at an angle. Drop six drops into top hole. Do not touch card with tip.
Keep fingers away from the swab end. Open swab package at stick and take swab out. Using medium pressure, rub the swab against all of the inside walls of your nostril. Make at least five big circles. Each nostril must be swabbed for about 15 seconds. Using the same swab, repeat step five in your other nostril. Insert swab tip into bottom hole. Firmly push the swab tip from the bottom hole until it is visible in the top hole. Do not remove the swab from the card.
Turn swab to the right three times to mix the swab with the drops. Do not skip this step. Leave the swab in the card for the remainder of the test. False negative results can occur if swab is not turned. Wait 15 minutes. Read the results at 15 minutes. Do not read the results before 15 minutes or after 30 minutes. Testing for COVID-19 keeps us in school and keeps us in sports. Thank you for keeping Sitka High safe by following these key steps.
Go Wolves!
And that will conclude my report. Thank you very much and go Wolves.
That was very informative. I had no idea how those rapid tests were done, so that's kind of cool. Um, alright, well, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
No questions, but could we possibly get the, um, the PowerPoint sent to us? Thank you.
Alright, do you guys mind if we take like a five-minute recess real quick and then we'll resume? Okay, five-minute break. Sorry. Alright, we are resuming the meeting at 8:00 PM and we are on to, um, item 13A, new business, and this is just review of board policy 0520, school accountability and school improvement. I'll pass it over to Superintendent Hauser.
Yeah, so one of the things, this is just, um, there were some changes to the, uh, notes section, so, um, this doesn't have to have, uh, board approval to, uh, go in, but it is going to be, uh, one of the things we're going to try to do is, as we review policies as well, is notate when those policies are reviewed and, um, updated, uh, whether it's through an official action by the board with new policies or if it's just to review a policy, just, um, so we can, uh, make note of, uh, at least, uh, the policy review committee or the board, uh, had a chance to look at it. And so, while this does not need to have, um, board approval because it is just the explanatory notes section that is being modified because, um, what has happened is the, uh, some of the laws that, um, required some of the college readiness assessments, including SAT, ACT, and work keys, uh, all sunsetted and so those are no longer required and so they changed some of those explanatory notes in there. And so what we wanted to do is just, um, put it in front of the board, just so you could see it, review, have a quick conversation, and that way when we do post the updated, um, uh, really it's not an updated policy, it's the same policy, but the updated document that has the, um, changes to the explanatory notes, um, we put down that, you know, it was just reviewed on this date, um, just for reference in the future.
And am I correct that the, the link to the one on our agenda online is the correct note? The one I printed out tonight was not the correct?
Yeah, I actually, uh, let me go through. I don't, I think there was, the one on, uh, line is mostly correct. I looked back at it and, um, it is not the correct one because, uh, it needs to say the superintendent or designee and so that actually the one that is online is, um, is not correct. So the one that you printed out here is correct, uh, it's the one that is, uh, accurate, except it does not have the notes, uh, it, it still has the notes section in there. So it'll be the exact policy that you see in front of you that was, uh, copied off, the hard copy, except the notes section will be, um, different.
Anyone have any questions about that? Alright, so we can move on to the next one, which is, um, 13B, review of, um, AR 1312, public complaints concerning school personnel. You'll speak to that one as well.
Yeah, so, um, just going through and, um, you know, every year we, uh, we go through as a member, um, and working with AASB, they go through and review, um, you know, uh, policies and administrative regulations and this is just a way to go through and just update some of the language, uh, that we have regarding, uh, public complaints concerning school personnel. Uh, a couple of, um, key differences that you will see in this, um, updated AR 1312, um, really speaks to, um, you know, in the old, uh, AR, there were, um, some, if, you know, example, um, under number three, written complaints should be submitted no longer than 30 calendar days following the dates. Um, and while, you know, it does, it should be, uh, should, it could also be passed in. So, uh, in some of the new references, you will see that there's, um, you know, we just want to make sure that we're receptive to any concerns or complaints when they come through. Uh, there might be some situations where, uh, there are timelines that might not fall into that and we want to be respectful of that and have a policy and a procedure in place through their ARs, uh, that address, um, some of those, um, issues or concerns that come through. Uh, we also, uh, the new AR speaks to, um, you know, kind of going through and having that formal process, which is very similar to what that formal process is, um, uh, going through. One of the other things that, uh, is outlined though in the new AR and it's at the end of the first page, uh, speaks to if a complaint remains unresolved, um, uh, after a review by the principal or the immediate supervisor, the principal shall refer the written complaint together with a report and analysis of the situation to the superintendent or designee. Complaints should consider the accept, consider and accept the superintendent or designee's decision as final. Um, and so, uh, any, uh, complaints concerning school personnel would, uh, go through the process, uh, try to be resolved, um, through, uh, conversations with, uh, the, sometimes it's a prin- uh, teacher, sometimes it's teacher and principal, sometimes it's the principal, and it does have a procedure to come through, um, and come across my desk through the written complaint process. Um, and on page two, you'll see that, except when a complaint is directed against the superintendent or designee, no party to a complaint may address the school board. Uh, school board members shall make every effort to not prejudice themselves by listening to or discussing the matter of the complaint with any other school board member, staff, students, or public prior to receiving the superintendent's report and formal meeting as a board on the issue. And so much of the language is the same. Those are the key highlight changes to the AR, um, from what the old version was to what the new version is.
So, um, in, uh, times past, we, um, we had talked about this and, um, one of the goals that we had was to have a clear sort of flow chart or something on, uh, on the district's website.
Yes.
You know, and that was, that was partially selfish, I think, on the board's point because, you know, we do get our ears bent on, on stuff and we have to explain, you know, that we, that we have to follow policy and it was, you know, I mean, it was definitely to empower the complainees and, and make it clear for everyone as well, but, um, I can't remember if we, I, I was looking for it and I haven't been able to find it.
We, we do. Uh, we actually have, if you look at board policy, um, 1312 Concerns and Complaint Guide E., so it's one of our examples that we have on there and, um, I don't know if Chris, you can pull it up? I was able to pull it up on my computer. Um, it is mostly up to date and follows through. Um, the one change, of course, that is there is it still references, uh, follow a written signed complaint to the district with Superintendent John Holst and so, um, we're in the process of updating, uh, that as well, um, to go through. There are, um, you know, a couple of, just want to make sure that we're updating that, but that flow chart is mostly up to date, uh, just, like I said, there's a couple of small changes in that. Again, is, um, under our board policies, 1312 Concerns and Complaint Guide E.
So that's the tab that you find it under your, under school board?
Uh, yep, go under school board and go down to board policies. And then select the 1,000 Community Relations Policies. And then about midway down, you'll see 1312 Concerns and Complaints, Complaint Guide E. That's under Administrative Regulations on the right-hand side.
Okay, super. Good to know. Thank you so much.
No, no worries. Thank you for the question. And like I said, we were actually working on getting that, uh, put up with just the, um, name change and what I will do is make sure that at the next board meeting, I'll have that, we can take a look at that just for final review and make sure I send that out as well, um, before we make that final change, um, you know, for the ARs, just so you get a chance to review that as well.
Any other questions on that one then? Great, I did not know that that, um, flow chart was on there, so that's really great to know. Alrighty, um, so moving on to item 13C, discussion of graduation regalia, and I will...
Alright, um, so I, I, I wanted to, um, uh, take a moment. Uh, we've had some conversations, uh, as a board and with some board members, uh, regarding, um, uh, regalia at graduation. Uh, a couple of things I just want to talk about. It's my understanding that SSD has had a longstanding practice of graduates wearing traditional tribal regalia or objects of cultural significance at graduation ceremonies. Um, I'd also like to recognize that practice, which sets SSD apart from other districts. And I also believe it's important to have that practice included in official board policies. Um, myself, I mean, I, I came from a district that, um, you know, had, uh, established a graduation regalia policy. Um, I, so I have some experience working with students, uh, with graduation regalia and, uh, with community members and putting together, uh, some and talking about, uh, the graduation pol- policies. Um, a couple of things that I fully support a graduation regalia policy in SSD that provides for students wearing traditional tribal regalia or objects of cultural significance at graduation ceremonies. Um, I do not believe that students should be required to wear a cap if it's incompatible with the regalia or significant object. I also do not support any type of approval process like some other districts have, um, through the regalia process. Um, for me, graduation day is a day to celebrate our students and honor their achievements and being able to, uh, have students, um, wearing traditional tribal regalia or objects of cultural significance also, I think, celebrates and recognizes them as well. And so I, I think this is something that, um, I wanted to kind of, uh, bring up and, uh, have with the board, uh, discussing around, um, kind of next steps for looking at, uh, putting maybe a group or committee together to talk about, uh, graduation regalia and a, a formal board policy along that lines.
Um, I myself am, uh, would like to say, um, how excited, um, to hear that we are on this subject. Um, it has been brought up within the community, questioning where the district stands on regalia and traditional and cultural, uh, objects being presented and, um, worn during graduation. Um, it, I had a discussion when Mr. Holtz was, um, our superintendent and it was at a time where there was a transition between himself and you, so again, I'm really excited to be talking about this. Um, from my understanding, the policy that we do have in place is, is very vague, um, from my understanding. We do have one. I've, I've had it, um, I've searched myself. I haven't really found it. Um, I, I believe John found it once, but I agree that we need to, um, have something in writing, um, to support, um, our practices and, um, I do want to acknowledge that. Um, it's been my understanding that Sitka, um, High School as well as Pacific High School, um, have been very welcoming and supportive during the graduation ceremonies, but again, I agree, um, what we uphold and what we, um, follow through on should be in writing. And I agree with you, um, about, um, the, to have it supportive and less, um, restrictive.
Your recommendation probably is to create a, like, form a committee, right, to put together a policy and then the board to look at that?
Yeah, I think that would be, I, I think, um, students, uh, administration, community members, uh, represented from, uh, Sitka Tribe of Alaska, um, board member, I, I think that would be, uh, being able to step back, look at, I, I have, uh, done, um, and worked and done a lot of research on graduation regalia, but I think this really is a, a community, um, you know, school, uh, school board, um, you know, kind of process that needs to go through to, um, you know, discuss, uh, the graduation regalia, uh, and, uh, you know, come forward with, uh, maybe a recommendation to the board, uh, to look at, um, you know, moving forward, uh, for graduation.
Anyone else have any thoughts or ideas or suggestions or?
Um, I guess I wonder, are there certain, are there current committees that could take this on? Uh, of course, I'm thinking of the Policy Committee, which Blossom and I are on and we haven't met very frequently, um, but if it's, um, the Policy Committee is mostly, I mean, it's not for drafting new policies, is it? Or is it, I mean, we could take that, uh, form a subcommittee on it, not to invite more work for us, but, um, or if, if the group thinks that just a, a general new committee, it's a temporary, uh, thing, just to get this off the ground, that's a better way to go. That was my first thought.
Definitely, we, we do have the Policy Committee, Committee in place and, um, whenever policies come up that, um, refer to cultural and traditional, um, knowledge and significance, um, when it comes to the school district and our students, um, we do invite, um, the tribe, um, Tristan Givon and, um, LaKrisha, um, Johnson, um, but I am all ears if, if, um, you want to form a subcommittee, I suggest, um, getting in touch with the Cultural Committee at Sitka Tribe and go from there.
So, as I think about this, um, I'm definitely in favor of, of coming up with a policy. I'm definitely in favor of, of regalia and, and, um, you know, objects of student significance. Um, I think that perhaps we should even widen the scope in, in the idea that we have, uh, other cultures that, uh, may want to be represented. We may, we may end up falling into, uh, a, um, a situation of, you know, where do we just, kind of put this, you know? Rather than coming up with a list of things that are allowed, sort of focusing on, you know, what would be, what would be dissuaded, you know, anything that might be, um, offensive or, so, I mean, I would be, I think either one of those takes, um, and I guess I would also encourage that we do talk to Sitka Tribe of Alaska, but I think even the Al- Alaska Native Brotherhood, we have a lot of other cultures, Alaska Native cultures that are represented in Sitka too that may not be, feel regionally represented there. Um, so I guess those are a couple of thoughts that I had. Thanks.
No, I absolutely think that- No, I absolutely think that, um, you know, discussion around a policy, um, absolutely, um, tribal regalia, traditional tribal regalia, um, and/or objects of cultural significance are, you know, really that, that represent, um, the diverse cultures that we have represented, uh, in Sitka. And I think being able to, uh, have those in place, uh, and having representatives, have those conversations, what that look for, uh, what that's gonna look like in board policy. To go to your point about, um, you know, defining what that looks like and making sure that, um, you know, there's nothing offensive, and, and that I think is the term they use. And I think that, that's where thoughtful and dialogue, discussion, and creating good policy hopefully will, will avoid some of those, um, those, you know, bumps in the road, let's say, those, uh, areas that could come back and not necessarily be what we want them to, um, you know, that board policy. And I think that's where having good input from community members, from, you know, our, our partners, uh, and also, like I said, having, having school representatives on there. I think having, um, you know, representatives from the policy committee, and of course, depending on how we'd like to, you know, the board would like to, um, assign that out. I mean, I think that that would be a good place to start, a subcommittee of the policy committee, um, that comprises, um, some, uh, you know, uh, students, staff, um, representatives from the community, from different, um, you know, cultural organizations, um, to sit down and start having a conversation of what, what that policy might look like. And like I said, I've done a lot of research in working with some of my students, um, at my previous school, uh, to, um, testify and to advocate for, uh, graduation regalia policy. And so I think that's a great place to start, is to bring people together, have a conversation, start looking at some, uh, uh, policies that are out there, what's, what seems to work, what seems to not work, how they define, um, define, you know, that policy to, uh, include, um, uh, traditional, uh, regalia or, um, uh, items of cultural significance. And I think that's just, that's the start, and of course, starting that dialogue and that discussion.
Yeah, this is, that's, uh, it's encouraging to, to, uh, I was glad to see this on the agenda. I, I think it was last, last spring during graduation, I don't remember where it was in the United States, but there was more than one story of, 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 uh, students. There, there wasn't a policy or whatever, but they did wear some form of a traditional, I don't know if it was, uh, you know, Native American or another culture, but, uh, they were actually, uh, denied their, their diploma, you know? And I, I just thought, my gosh. Um, I mean, obviously you don't want somebody, uh, showing up to graduation with, with something that could be offensive or, you know, it's like, you know, is it really a cultural, you know, type? But, uh, this was clearly, uh, a student that was proud in their, their heritage, and, you know, it wasn't it, and just because there was no policy, the decisions were made right at the, the night of, I mean, as the graduation is, they're forming and getting lined up, and, uh, that's just tragic, you know? And for us to be forward-thinking on this and, you know, being able to have dialogues of, be it, uh, and I'd like, I mean, maybe it was by design or by accident that it, that it, uh, discussion of graduation regalia doesn't exactly specifically identify, um, what type of regalia or what, uh, ethnicity or, you know, which I think is, is good. Um, and quite frankly, if I, Sitka has such a rich, diverse culture. I mean, we, a lot, a lot of Alaska has that, and, uh, personally, I think it would be pretty, uh, great to be at a graduation and to look out at the graduating class and see representation of that, you know, of those cultures if a student chose, be it Filipino, Hispanic, Native American, or whatever, African American. It does, it doesn't matter if it's Scandinavian, you know, something that you see a traditional, um, person who's proud of graduating, but proud of their heritage. Uh, I think that would be great, and I'm, I'm glad that this is on the agenda, and I won't have a hand in it other than maybe speaking to it at a meeting or something, but, uh, it's encouraging to see just another part of our district that's thinking ahead instead of, you know, reactionary, you know? And that's, it pays forward so much, and we're seeing that time and time again. So, thanks for that.
Well, I guess my recommendation would be, um, next week on the fifteenth, we will be forming our, you know, our committees and everything and doing all of our board assignments. So, um, is that next week? Is that next, yeah, okay. Next week is the fifteenth. Um, so what do you guys think about, when we do that, we come up with our policy committee, then we kinda put it in the hands of the policy committee to come up with a subcommittee and really spearhead this, like, on like, whole plan? Okay, um, so then whoever, whoever chairs the policy committee, you'll be taking this on. But I know you've done so much research and really have a deep knowledge of this area, so you'll serve on the committee too, right?
I would love to, and I want to very much, so hopefully the, uh, subgroup, I will be invited to be part of the subgroup.
Yeah, yeah, alright, so I'm making a note of that so that when we do that, um, we can remember. Word with that, and then I would think we'd need something by January or February to go to the policy committee so that we have time to make sure we have two readings of it before May graduation, so, um, yeah. Right, so then, um, we don't have any correspondence and information, future and upcoming events? We have got our school, special school board meeting. So note, it is five o'clock, um, on the fifteenth, so earlier time, and it's in the, um, school district boardroom. That's a Friday, so next Friday, five o'clock. Eric, you're dismissed from this. Um, and then just, um, reminder too, we do our goal-setting retreat on the, I think we usually start around five or six on Friday, the twenty-ninth, and then most of the day on Saturday, the thirtieth. Um, and Timmy Tollis will be here for that, um, and again, in the district office boardroom for that. Um, our next regular school board meeting is on Monday because that's the week that, um, the AASB conference starts, so we move our meeting to Monday on the first, here at six PM. And then, um, the AASB annual conference, November fourth through seventh. I did announce at our last meeting that AASB has said that, you know, they were requiring, um, proof of vaccination for, um, the conference, and they did change that. I don't know if you guys got, or if it even matters, but they did send out something that they did change that, and there's, did you see this? Um, oh, really? Um, just so you guys know, when we do the registration, I don't know how it all works, but you either have to provide proof of vaccination or like a negative COVID test, I wanna say, within three days prior to the event. There's a few different things there, just, um, also wanna let you guys know, I'm actually not going to be attending the conference this year because it's the same date as the volleyball regional tournament, and I have two seniors playing volleyball, and it's my last time to see them, so, um, so unfortunately, I'm choosing my family over school board this time, so, you know, I'm sorry. I've, I've missed it for the last three years, so I was like, this year? I just couldn't do it this year, sorry. Um, but I will try and attend things remotely for, you know, anything that I can or whatever, but yeah, um... Um, so yeah, we got a lot coming up in the next month. Eric, you will be missed.
Well, you guys will have a, for those who are going to the, uh, the, the conference up there, um, that's a regret. I, I only made it to two of them, and, uh, they are, they're very, very good. It's, uh, and I know I, I talked to Todd a little bit about that last week, and, uh, yeah, it's, it's encouraging, whatever they can do to be able to get people together and, um, just the incredible diversity of the different boards, and from the interior and everywhere, the southwest and here, and, uh, yeah, I'm really glad you guys are, for those who are able to, to go there, it's, it's, I've said it time and time again, it's not a boondoggle. It's really, really a, a very worthy, worthy thing, so I'll be, uh, cheering you on from, from here.
Okay, well, with that, um, I think our meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-six PM.